Second.
All right, all in favor?
All opposed.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Uh, I'm sorry, that was Ballard and Webb.
I gotta get my Denise moved on. Okay, Ballard and Webb.
Yep.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Not a problem. All right, entertain an approval of the October meeting minutes.
So move.
Second. All right, so moved by Ron, second by Mary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Hey, Madam President.
Yes.
Since we lost our President and the Vice President was elevated, I would like to nominate Ryan Ballard for the rest of this year until reorganization in January.
I'll second that.
All right.
Just clarification, you mean to the President pro tem position? You're nominating him to serve as President pro tem?
Vice President. Oh, okay.
Either way. Just wanted to be clear for the record.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Staying.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, and then per usual, questions from the public may be directed to county council district, excuse me, county council dist, D-I-S-T, at co.delaware.in.us. You can message us during the meeting or anytime throughout the month, and we will be able to get back to your questions. So moving on, we have a couple tax abatements. Brad is here. Great.
Good morning, council members. I'm Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Development. I had mentioned to Ron and Mary when I came in that my first meeting with them was in 2004, 18 years ago, in this room. So I want to congratulate them on a long service here, and I've certainly learned from both of them a lot and wish them well in their endeavors. And Ryan Ballard, I certainly wish you well also. So probably my last meeting possibly with you in, so yeah. Today, we have two tax abatements for your consideration. The first of which is Living Greens Farms, which you've been forwarded the tax abatement application on. I'm going to quickly run through some of the highlights of the application that they had presented, and then I'll turn it over to Jerry Gray for a couple words about the company and any questions from you. So the company is located at 2450 West Fuseon Road in Muncie. This is the former Shell building on Fuseon Road that the county previously worked with, the Delaware Advancement Corporation on. They are purchasing new equipment, including HVAC, grow systems, conveyance, harvest systems, watering systems, washing systems, and racking systems. This is separate, this is another separate investment from the original investment that they had planned on making at. So this is like a phase two of the project. They give a kind of a long description, I will not read at all, of what all that equipment does in the application. The estimated purchase price of the equipment is $31,696,226. The equipment is being brought to Delaware County from out of state. The only environmental impact that they note is that they will have a water discharge from the equipment. They are currently current on all of their tax liabilities. They have no judgments, liens, or pending litigation against the company. They've been in business for 11 years. They're headquartered in Fairbault, Minnesota. And with this abatement, they're anticipating adding 40 new jobs. They're anticipating 20 new jobs within the next 12 months. Total phase one of the project committed 120 jobs. The starting hourly wage is $19 an hour. They do offer their employees health insurance. And then on the last page of the application, there is an estimate of tax abatement savings to the company. So we had this figured as a three-year phased-in tax abatement. That's important to note, it's just three years and it's phased in. So over the three years phased in, the total abatement savings estimated for the company is $635,000, I'm sorry, $635,380 in savings. So I'll let Jerry say a couple words about the company. Jerry, you want to come up and?
Good morning, councilmen and council ladies. My name is Jerry Gray. I'm the plant engineer for Living Greens Farm. I'm locally based, and we're getting everything going. Really excited about coming here. This is a, this is a great opportunity for Delaware County to also diverse their market, not only from automotive manufacturing, but now I think what is, we call the phase and next into the future with farming. Is there anybody who has any questions?
Will your product be delivered to local stores and such?
Absolutely. Right now, they're in Fairbault, they're tied into a fresh, fresh, fresh time, Walmarts. We'll do the same thing here, but we'll probably start out with the smaller companies first to get our market stretched. Everything will be basically directed in Indiana. That's the whole point of this. We can bring it all fresh. Instead of bringing it from California, you got a five-day truckload. We can hopefully want to back out in the stores within 14 to 24 hours after harvest. That's what makes our product, we think, is really good. Plus no pesticides or anything like that.
I just read an article in Farm Bureau Magazine this week where there's a fellow in Indianapolis that's using those big storage buildings that they haul material across on the ships.
Yep.
Converted two of those into, I assume, a similar operation as yours on smaller.
They're doing hydroponics. It's similar, we're aeroponics. I don't know if you know the difference between. There's regular soil growing, then there's hydroponics where the roots float into the water system. Aeroponics, there aren't, there is no water and there is no dirt. It's a mist of water that we keep. A lot of this was developed through NASA. Disney has huge projects into it, and it helps reduce all the water conserve. I mean, you see what's going on out in California and everywhere else, all the water being used. We're going to use 98% less water and produce year-round, which is huge. And aeroponics is a whole new market that's taken off, as opposed from hydroponic. It's like the next level coming in.
General knowledge, what's your products?
Different types of lettuce, like four different types of lettuce. And what they do is they put it into a, they'll take the head of lettuce and sell the head of lettuce, the remain by itself, but they also do bags. It's sort of like potato chip bags. But you have your seasoning, your croutons, different varieties of lettuce in there. You buy it, open it up, instant salad, out salad dressings in it, those kind of things. We're going to do basically five different varieties out of Muncie.
I've personally seen the, there's a ride at Epcot where you ride through and you can see.
Do you see all the roots hanging down like that?
Yeah, it's really kind of neat to see that.
That's exactly what this is going to be. And we're going to go the full, we're doing vertical going up, so we're a lot more, I think, I forget how many, it's about 5 million pounds per year is what we're going to do.
Interesting.
And it'll all be locally here.
So your attorney has, Mr. Freeman has prepared the resolution for this. This area has already been declared an economic revitalization area, so that, I believe that step is passed, but I believe you have copies of the resolutions.
We do.
Sir, I apologize. For the record, can we, can you repeat your name, just for the minutes?
My name is Jerry Gray. I'm the plant engineer.
Thank you.
For LGF.
And Mr. Ballard's correct, this individual property is already in an economic revitalization area, so you don't have to declare it, so you can move forward with the approval of the abatement today.
This abatement's just for equipment, correct?
Correct.
Shall we go on that now, or?
It's up to you, Mr. Ballard.
Yeah, go ahead.
What was the resolution number? I move for approval of resolution 2022-0, did you say 23?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, moved by Ballard, second by Lassiter. Any further questions? There are none, roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Sir, just, I have one more question, out of curiosity. One more question, just so the public, so since you're going to be marketing locally, will you be marketing the actual retail product under Living Greens Farms?
Yes. I've got a brochure here too, if somebody, if you guys would like to see it.
Just something to look for when we're at Payless or Walmart or wherever else.
That's what we're doing up there.
Okay.
But we're really going to hit a lot of the local small stores first around, and then actually grow the product out.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
The Bolterians out.
All right.
Oh, here it is, I walked one too far.
Thanks so much.
Good job, Jerry.
All right, great. Well, with that, we'll move on to our ARC EDM Inc. Brad, take it away.
Yes, so ARC EDM Incorporated is located at 1800 West Mount Pleasant Boulevard in Muncie. I've included a map with the application so that you can see exactly where the facility is located at. I have with us here today Daniel and Ashley Miller, who are the owners and operators of ARC EDM. They are planning to purchase a Titan Force 42, 45-axis small hole EDM drilling machine, which I have no idea what that means, but I'm sure they'll fill you in. The purchase price of the equipment is six, I'm sorry, is $269,000. It's being brought in from out of state. We have confirmed their property tax assessment currently is $115,300 is their last real estate property tax assessment. Their last personal property tax assessment on existing machinery is $224,240. They are current on all their tax liabilities. They have no liens, judgments, pending litigation. They've been in business for four and a half years. Their headquarters is there on Mount Pleasant Boulevard. There are three employees. They hope to add one through this abatement. And they've made their $150 filing fee to Delaware County. I failed to mention on the previous application, but like the previous one, this one also did have a favorable recommendation from the tax payment committee. So I'll let Daniel and Ashley say just a word or two about the company.
Hi.
All right, good morning.
I'm Daniel Miller, and this is my wife Ashley, and we're the owners of ARC EDM Incorporated. And the machine that we're wanting to buy, it's an EDM drill. So EDM is Electrical Discharge Machine, and we're going to use a brass electrode, it's just a round rod, and we can drill holes in hardened steel, carbide. We can do a lot of stuff you can't conventionally drill. We can drill small holes. For example, we can go as small as 4 thousandths in diameter. Your hair's 3 thousandths in diameter, so just a little bit bigger than that. And we go up to a quarter inch, and we can go up to 30 inches deep with small holes like that. We're hoping to get into aerospace industry and hopefully bring work in from like GE, Rolls Royce, Boeing, companies like that. The machine is, the one we're looking at buying, it's made in New York, and then it's fully made in the USA, 100% USA-made.
Well, talk about this though, real quick. This is something that's going to help expand the business. You're not replacing a machine. You're adding to your business.
Yeah, we're adding to it. We have a small hole drill now, but the capacity's very small, and it's a manual machine. This is full CNC, and we're hoping to get into large work, large parts, and bringing new customers.
Aerospace, things like that, is something that you're wanting to do?
Yes.
Pretty specifically, I guess.
Yes.
This is equipment that is not in Delaware County now, and it's a family-owned business. They live in a neighboring county, but their business is headquartered here, which we're happy about, and we want to encourage them to continue to grow the operation.
I have a question, Mr. Bookout. Let me reflet back for a second. I'm learning with these tax abatements as we go. And one of the things I learned back with the solar farm proposal was the ERA, the Economic Revitalization Area, and what that entails. My understanding of it is it's an area that can't be used for anything else, any formula or anything. Has to be used for some type of manufacturing or something along those lines. At that time, my understanding was that declaration or a tax abatement for something such as this would be to, to build a new business, not necessarily for an existing business that's already there. So can you help me understand a little bit about how that works for declaring an ERA for a business that's already up and running and profitable as it is already? Could you help me with that?
Yeah, so with the ERA, you know, an existing business may be in place and may be operating and may, may be profitable at the time, but their growth and future contracts and future sustainability of the company may not be viable without or but for the ability to redevelop and add new machinery and grow the business and improve the business. So that is one of the things that we're doing here with the ERA. We're actually going from their existing operation to add something new that therefore in turn would continue the business on for a long period of time. So they have to remain, businesses have to remain competitive. They're competing globally with companies that can do this a lot cheaper than what they can do it for. So in an effort to compete globally, this is an option to create an ERA and have that in place to allow them to have some tax savings. I failed to go, or to say the number of their tax abatement. Their abatement is a five-year abatement, and it is estimated over a five-year period phased in that their abatement savings on this machine would be $10,530.
To follow up on what you just said, I noticed that these companies are both out in the industrial area for the sake of expediency, so we don't have to worry about dealing with this. What would ever prevent just declaring that whole area an ERA, so we don't have to jump through all these hoops every time?
It could certainly be done. I just was hesitant to ever come in and just ask for that blanket approval. Yeah, we could do the whole county.
I wouldn't go that far with it.
Yes, exactly. But in fact, it's been, it's been understandable for the county to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment. I had experienced an industry for 12 and a half years of my early life, and I can't believe you can use this kind of machinery to make a hole that small. I had experienced way back years ago with this process, but not, like, this is unbelievable, really. I can't believe you can do that.
Need to stop out sometime.
Well, it's just, it's, it's, it's the future. We've got to encourage people to do things like this because this is, this is so special. What you're drilling a hole in carbide, to me, I used to use carbide tools in the shop. Carbide is, it's harder than glass, almost. Now, you can drill a hole in carbide.
This, it uses electricity, and the brass rod never touches the carbide. It just arcs and erodes away at the carbide. It's just, it's literally just eroding it away, just burning through it.
So you can put a hole in a piece of stainless steel in a New York minute.
30 inches thick?
Yeah, yeah. And we can also do holes on an angle. If your material's on an angle, we can drill down into that without the drill bit deflecting.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I've experienced that. I'm a toolmaker by trade, so I know what you're talking about.
We drill holes through ball bearings. Now, that's nearly impossible.
Fascinating.
All right, any further questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution. This one is 2022-024.
So move.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
I'm confused because Denise, you know, has it in minutes already. So she had abatements on there first to be approved, then she had resolutions later.
They're doing it at the same time.
So you're just doing it all at the same time?
Yeah, since we have them right here.
So actually, you're approving the abatement and the resolution. Right?
They've just combined the two into one section, basically.
They're all, they're all separate documents.
Right.
That's how she did it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll give you a minute.
So, well, I got, I went back and got the first one caught up. So I changed Living Green and put on there, you're approving the resolution, so I just need to add that on. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Okay, who made the motion?
Ballard. Second by Ron.
I just need to add that resolution in there and delete what she's got on down.
For the council's benefit, you're not actually approving the tax abatement today. You're doing the initial approval on the economic revitalization area before the next, before your December meeting, there'll be a public hearing for public comment, and then you'll have to confirm, subject any modifications that you might make, the same resolution, and then you can entertain a resolution to approve the actual tax abatement. So it's a two-step process because the ERA was not already in place.
Yeah, this is just for the ERA.
This is only for the ERA, it's the preliminary step.
For ARC. We did not have to do that for Living Greens.
Correct, Living Greens has passed.
Point of information.
Yes.
Normally, we only have transfers at the December meeting. You want to be sure that the December agenda is posted and advertised properly so that there will be business besides transfers, and it's not uncommon to do that. But we need to make sure that December meeting is no longer a transfer only.
We'll sign the resolutions.
That's the effective document. Yep, it's got to go quick, yep. Just trying to make us not have an embarrassing moment there.
Sure. All right, so we have a motion by Ballard, a second by Ron. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move over to our ordinances. We have an ordinance defining terms and establishing procedures for hiring and implementing salaries for county employees excluding merit officers. This is ordinance 2022-028.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Fortunately, I don't have the ordinance with me. Can, can anyone?
Extras lying down there.
I thought I grabbed every sheet down there, but I must have missed it.
We are out.
I was just curious if anyone else stopped and knew any major changes to that, just for public record.
We pretty much just tried to combine and simplify. I don't know if you recall, a couple meetings ago, we tried to like work through it, and there were a lot of opportunities to streamline, to make things a little more congruent. And then there were salary increases to basically every bullet point.
Yeah, this was cleaning up the mess and making it all one.
Right.
One ordinance, right? And then just a couple issues.
Yes, it was cleaning up the mess of, there were, I can't remember how many actual individual salary lines there were, many of which were the exact same. We condensed all of that and then put hourly part-time pay increases in there that goes back to the discussions that happened during budget time. But this is the actual ordinance that those part-time salaries would be in. So it has raises across the board in the individual line items. And then there were a couple of typos and other things that got cleaned up. But as you recall, this ordinance itself, in the prior version, was passed earlier in the year that was a combination of all of the various changes that had been made. So we've been trying to keep it in one ordinance that's easy for you and the public to look at and understand what's out there, and now we've tried to condense it. So we went from 15 different individual light items, probably down to eight or nine, I think. We got rid of quite a few of them on the salaries.
If you recall, and I apologize for not knowing this already, but I'm hoping maybe you'll remember since you wrote it. I'd brought up an issue about, there are a couple restrictions in there that said that if someone hired, then they must have a college degree, two-year, four-year for certain positions. And I asked, does anyone working in those positions currently have those degrees? And the answer was no, and I asked if we could remove those. Do you know if those have been removed, or if we're still requiring college degrees for, for jobs that no one else has a college degree?
I believe there is, number one, I think we removed the actual requirement the last time we passed it, is my rec, you've got my copy, so I can't point to it specifically. I don't believe it's an actual requirement. It may be a preference as listed.
A preference, but not a requirement, okay. Okay.
Ryan?
My apologies for.
Let me help you a little bit here.
The word college does not show up in this document.
Awesome.
I think we removed that back in, I remember August when we passed it the first time.
I couldn't remember if we did it or not. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to assure you that I, having been involved in so many of these ordinances and trying to get it consolidated, and then Scott was having a little problem with some redundancy in there that I had problems with also. And so I called Scott, and he arranged a meeting. We kind of an ad hoc committee with Ben at his office, with Jessica and Scott and myself, and we reviewed every line item through here, and hopefully we've got it where we like it. Now, I did goof on one thing, and Donna brought that to my attention on, on the back page where it said they could accumulate 40 hours. It says 80 hours now, and that was in the handbook as 80 hours. I would have preferred it to be 40, but I'm not going to call it a big discussion on it. We'll leave it like it is now, and you guys can think about that later on. But Ben assured me that if the council wanted to make it 40, then the commissioners would have to change their handbook. It wouldn't be the council agreeing. It's the council's prerogative to set these rates, hourly rates especially. And my insistence on getting this done was the fact that we had given some appreciable increases in pay to employees and had done nothing for part-time people. So that's why I pushed hard, and I thank Scott and Jessica for letting me be a part of it. I appreciate that. Ben did a wonderful job on it. Thank you.
Just to be clear, before you, before you vote today, you're only introducing it, you're not actually approving it today. There'll also be a public hearing before next month's meeting before you can adopt it.
Fair enough, thank you.
We'll have a lot of fun things besides transferring next month.
Do you want to suspend the rules today?
If you want to pass it today, we can have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules.
We don't need a public hearing on this.
I'll leave it to your discretion. I don't see the urgency. You've got another vote, another public meeting before the end of the year. I see no reason to suspend the rules. All of these are going to be effective 2023, so you've got time.
I say we introduce it and just go from there.
Yeah.
That way you guys next year can figure it out.
Motion to approve.
You already did.
We already did, okay.
Yes, Ron, you moved.
Second.
Webb seconded. All right, any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
That's what they say, first to go.
All right, let's move on to our transfer financials.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we're starting in County General. Commissioners, 153. We have 171, FICA, negative 25,000. 198, part-time, positive 30,000. 222, cleaning supplies, negative 5,000, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Prosecutor, 137. We have B 106, Deputy Prosecutor, for negative $816. C 106, Deputy Prosecutor, positive $816, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, this appears to be just an employee replacing someone who's left. Any questions? Do we have a representative from the, yeah, we do, from the prosecutor's office? No questions? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ballard and Webb.
Circuit Court, 138. B 155, probation officer, negative 4,200. 325 Comcast slash AirCards, positive $4,200. Total, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
How do I know?
Right. Do you educate me on this?
Yes. Emily Anderson Court Administrator. When we moved in the new facility, the judges did not acquire their cable TV. None of us did when we moved to the new facility. So we waited to have money in the budget to get the cable ran. So that's, it's $4,100 just to run the lines to get the cable, the Comcast back. And then the Air Cards are for internet out at Juvenile. So anytime we lose internet at Juvenile, it takes at least a day to get it back. It's not a quick fix. So they can't do court. So it costs $29.99 each a month through Verizon to get internet cards. So that's going to be $60 a month for me. So I'm going to be paying that every month to provide them internet when they go down. So that's where the $4,200 comes in.
So this is for cable?
Mm-hmm.
And where?
In the judges' offices.
$4,200?
To run the lines, because it wasn't done at the build.
Let me ask you a question. I'm the most diehard cable guy ever. I fought it forever, until recently, my wife threatened to turn the heat off.
This is for the lines we run, not the cable bill. The cable bill is $799 a month. This is just to have the lines run.
Well, it's still, but they tie together. You've got to have the lines.
Babcock does the lines.
I guess what I'm getting at is, in this day and age with everything streaming for such cheap, why wouldn't we look at a different option instead of having to spend this much money on cable?
Fire stick.
Yeah, I mean, you can stream things for a little bit of nothing.
I don't know.
You've got PUP TV, you've got every channel for like 25 bucks a month.
I guess you'll have to ask the judges. They're the ones that made the decision.
They're the ones that want it, yeah.
She's the representative for them, so that's why I'm asking her.
They wanted their Comcast. It's just the basic $799 a month.
It's a hard line, right? The cables are hard.
It's a hard line that we're missing.
And that's what they're trying to get away from, is the possibility of it going down.
Right.
I can't get there, I'm sorry.
Well, it's.
That's fine.
It's a valid point. Every time I'd.
So this is to sustain the internet?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
This is two different requests into one line.
Okay.
The one is for cable for the judges because they lost that when we moved, right? But we have no lines ran. So when the build happened, they didn't run any lines. They didn't run any lines for the jail. They ran no lines for the courts. So we have to purchase that with our own money. We couldn't afford that last year, so we waited till this year. We had money in our budget to do it. So just to run the lines, to get the cables to our each office from where they need to run it from is $4,200, or $4,100. $4,114. And then the Air Cards is for Juvenile, which are $29.99 a piece. I need two of them, one for the judge and one for the office, one for the office staff, for them to be able to work in court if the internet goes down, because it's one to two days at least every time that happens. And it's happened more frequently than we like. So I have a $60 a month over here that I have to pay for, which I'll have to just put it out of my budget somewhere. And then I'll have like $799 a month times five, so about $300 a month, or $300 a year for cable. This $4,200 is just to get it going, just to run the lines.
Part of the cost that we weren't supposed to have when they moved everything.
I get it. I understand. It's the wire. My thing is cable's a dying dinosaur. Why are we investing $4,200?
Well, I'll tell you this. So we, when internet goes down, then we don't have it. If you go with, if you go with your streaming.
I mean, is it that the end of the world? That we don't get to watch TV?
Well, I mean, it's not. But I'm just thanking devil's advocate on that.
Except if it's in the middle of a case that you're hearing, right?
Well, this is just for their office.
This is TV. This is luxury.
This is just for their office, so they have their news channel, whatever, that they watch.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes. That they used to have.
What was the recommendation from Finance Committee?
It was approved in Finance Committee.
Yeah, we asked her a lot of questions, but we didn't get, she's still going to have to have it. I tried to make it easy, just ask the judge, Ryan. The judge can mandate it if they want to.
I guess I'm just not understanding why we have to have cable in an office.
Well, because the judges want it.
I wanted it in my office, too. They got to, they want it, but they don't have the ability to pay for it, will you?
Vote no, then I don't care.
Well, it's within their budget, but yes.
I'm just trying to help you a little. I've been through where the judges did mandate, so don't feel bad.
Oh, that's true, too. Yeah.
I totally get.
Yeah, and the other thing with streaming is we can't stream on our internet. We're not even allowed to stream on our personal, on like on personal devices, because it destroys the bandwidth. So we can't even go down that path. That's right. I didn't even think about that. We're not even allowed to get on Netflix on our own phone, because it blocks it, because it, there's so much bandwidth we have as a facility, and it would destroy it. So we have to go cable.
All right.
I mean, it's your decision. I'm just telling what the judges would like to have back. They had it before we moved. It's one thing we didn't get. I mean, there was lots of things I had to purchase out of my budget when we moved. We didn't have jury buzzers. We didn't have, you know all the stuff I've had to purchase. But again, we waited till we had it in our budget. That's what my budget's for. That's what I'm using it for. So that's why we waited until this year.
Listen, I'm, as someone, that's what I do. I like to watch TV. I totally get it. But I just can't wrap my head around it, invest in something that's a dying, I mean, I would be like saying, I need five grand to get a bunch of rotary phones. Like, nobody's using rotary phones. Like, it's a dying industry. So I have a hard time getting there. Sorry for any of you guys got any rotary phones. It just doesn't make sense to me. That's just my.
And I guess here's the thing. I mean, are we, is everything always going to be hardwired? Or, you know what I'm saying? Like, are we always going to have to have cable, or are we going to move past that as well, you know?
I mean, I still have Comcast at my house, so I pay $300 a month for it, so you know.
I refuse. So I mean, it's one of those things for me, it's hard to justify.
Is the IT department involved in?
No. This is Babcock to run the lines, the electrical company that has to come in and run those lines. They cannot, IT does not have anything in this.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Oh, thanks.
You have to make one hard decision.
I'll go first. I know my answer.
Maybe the judges needed to come in and plead their case. So on that, on that, I'll vote no, and so they can come in and plead their case.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
I'm going to vote yes. It's not new money. She's trying to do with what they already have approved. I don't disagree with Ryan totally, but it's not a new appropriation. It's something that I want to believe that the judges want. I had my own personal internet and my television at the home on Dish, which was through the air and the cloud and all that stuff, and it went sour and they couldn't repair it. So now I have cable. So I went backward, in your mind, but my stuff out of the cloud wasn't working.
What controversial.
Mr. Webb.
I'm going to say no, as a big fan of cable.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
No, but please have them come, put it on the agenda for December, so we can actually get some further clarification on what specifically they're looking to gain out of not cutting the cable.
And can I amend this to get, at least get my Air Cards for Juvenile?
I support that. I don't know if it's possible.
Can we do that?
But I would, I'm fine with that.
All right, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the Air Cards under line 325.
So I would only need to start out, I would say like $100, because it's only 60 bucks for two of them. So I'd say $100 to get through December.
Motion to approve.
So can we just amend that to negative 100 plus 100?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Webb, second by Ron.
Yep.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thanks.
The point of order, Ben, helped me here. I voted with the minority. Would I be allowed to make the amendment? Or should it be somebody that voted with the majority?
Was it your motion to amend for the?
Brian motioned.
I was going to say that came from.
Webb.
I think from Webb, actually. I think you're fine, Ron, if that's what you're asking.
Fair enough.
All right, moving on to Jail.
Okay, Jail, 145. 226 uniforms, positive $2,700. 314 testing, negative $2,700, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ron, second by Jane.
I have a question about the uniforms.
This is for our staff. This is for the correctional officers. This is not for inmates.
Right. But don't, does, am I wrong to say, don't they get a uniform allowance?
After their first year, we provide them uniforms to start with. Then after they've been, completed their full first year, they get a clothing allowance, not before that.
So this is those handful of folks who haven't been there yet? You've got to have some uniforms for that.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Title 4D Court, 123. A 105 Assistant Court Reporter, negative $2,320. 175 Health Insurance, positive $2,320, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Back up. Any questions?
I do.
Of course.
Could you say for the record what this is for the?
Yes. So we had a new employee go into 4D Court, and there wasn't, the position wasn't filled for a little while. So there's extra money in that salary line. The new employee that took the old employee's position, the old employee did not have health insurance, the new employee did. So it added to the health insurance that we have to provide.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm just taking it out of that line, moving it.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Public Defender's Office, 139. C 152 Former Employee Salary, negative $675. 322 Postage, positive $675, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any questions on this?
$675, is that just for the rest of the year?
That is for the postage currently due. We will get billed in January for the fourth quarter postage.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Auditor, 126. 364 Annual Support Imaging, negative $1,000. 441 Equipment, positive $1,000. Total, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Are any questions on this? Auditor's Office, just new computers?
Denise's new computer.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Okay, under other, we start off with Adult User Fee, $2,100. 172 perf, positive $905. 173 Health Insurance, negative $905, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions on this? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Cosafan, 1212. 172 perf, positive $285. 173 Health Insurance, negative $285, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ron.
All right, motion by Webb, second by Quaken Bush. Pretty similar. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
High Tech Crime Unit, 1195. 211 Supplies, positive $859.42. 323 Travel, negative $477.65. 363 Repairs, negative $381.77, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Jane.
All right, motion by Ballard, second by Lassiter.
I do have a question on this one. The repairs, that's a pretty specific number. Was there a certain repair that he was going to do that he all of a sudden didn't have to do anymore?
That money was set aside, basically just for getting the unit set up, and there's no foreseen expected cost the rest of this year for that amount. The specific amounts, I really like round numbers, so I was trying to get to a round number in my supply line.
Ah.
So that's why I took, that's just my idiosyncrasies there.
And what, exactly what supplies are they? Just a generalization for the record.
A lot of that money goes towards storage media. My supplies took a huge hit. I got a case that had 15 terabytes of data that I was going to have to address, which translated to about $800 worth of storage drives I had to buy. So my supplies got pretty much wiped out. And that's just based upon what comes in. If I get a case that big again tomorrow, I'll have to, again, get those drives to be able to handle that volume of data.
All right. Does the state take that into consideration at all? I mean, when it comes to some of the data that you're obviously going to have to store and keep for a considerable amount of time, there's a cost to that. They're putting this all together.
As, the short of it is, they give me a big bag of money at the beginning of the year, and they say, handle it however you want. So.
So does there, does there come a time, I guess, where the state, you know, because you have so much data that you're having to store and whatnot, and the state comes in and actually maybe helps out with that, or?
That has not.
Because you're, are you going to run through a considerable amount of your budget just for storage?
We haven't hit that point yet.
Right, but I'm just foreseeing. Is that?
A lot of my data, I'm doing like cold storage. It's not, it can be done pretty cheaply. Maybe they'll address it over time. I know, right now, they're doing every two years is the budget cycle, and it's been proposed anywhere from four to six million for all the units. If we get to six, that would double, for all 10, so a tenth of that, that would double my budget, starting in 2024. So we can definitely expand and grow there. But they're letting everybody manage their own funds.
Well, but over, over time, you're going to accumulate some costs when it comes to your caseload.
Right.
You know? So I just, I didn't know if that was.
We're not doing any like cloud storage or anything where there's a reoccurring cost for it. It's basically stored on mechanical drives and sealed in a bag and put away in a safe if we're not going to re-access it. If the case is done, it just goes away and is stored. So that's, in the digital world, that's pretty cheap storage. But, and everybody's running their units different. Some of them have been up and going for 10 years, and their county has absorbed most of their cost, so they're spending all their money on toys. And.
Say that again. The county's absorbing what cost?
The county's, I mean, like Tippit Canoe, they've had a high-tech crimes unit for 10 The counties, I mean, like Tippecanoe, they've had a high-tech crimes unit for 10 years. They just started the high-tech crimes unit at the state level this year, so...
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
They were already up and running, so he's been able to buy things that I can't, because I've had to buy desks and computers, and so...
Gotcha, okay.
Over time, it'll definitely change. I'll be seeing you guys a lot, so...
A startup in a lot of ways, yeah.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
That was it for me.
All right, any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Defender's Office, supplemental, 1200. 174 Life Insurance, positive $20. 175 Disability Insurance, positive $30. 184 File Maintenance, negative $50 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All right, hearing done, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on. Okay, next will be addendums. County General, 1000, Communications Department, 124. We do have one change on this, under the very first section where it reads salary and wages. The second line, instead of being I 108, that should be K 108. So the first section, J 108 Communication Tech, negative 5,775.55. K 108 Communication Tech, positive 5,775.55. And 124, I'm sorry, 211, Office Supplies, positive 500. 231 Maintenance Supplies, positive 500. 367 Telephone Backup, negative 13,000. 393 Schooling, positive 6,000. 441 Miscellaneous Equipment, 3,000. 442 Chairs, positive 2,000. 361 Equipment Repair, positive 1,000 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Cummins, there's a lot of this chairs and equipment repair and a lot of that stuff. Is that part of the, uh, the rebuild? Just finishing touches up on some of that stuff?
Yes.
Also, I'm glad to see you could make it back here and catch a flight eventually. I heard about your planes changed automobiles moment.
Yeah, it was great.
Mr. Ballard, thank you for encouraging me to take the tour. It's a beautiful job. That's a place where I think every employee would be looking forward to going to work every morning or every evening.
Well, I appreciate that.
It's really comfortable.
It's that guy right there. Fred's done an amazing job.
Fred took me the tour.
Scott and I came in one day, but you weren't there, but we still got a great tour from your employees, and everything looks so nice, and you could just tell the, the atmosphere in there was very positive. We were on day shift, folks were in there, they were very appreciative of the upgrades as well, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that, might explain to the audience your internship. I was impressed by that.
So we have an internship with the high school. We do have a couple students that come in quarterly and spend a few hours in there a couple times a week to, to learn the job and see if it's something they're interested in, so I know that we have at least one person that's interested in starting there after they get out of school, so...
Awesome.
I mean, that's really creative outside the box thing, and I've, I've mentioned that before to some of our other departments when we were really struggling with getting employees, and I know not everyone can do that. So kudos to you guys for, for finding ways to, uh, think outside the box and fix the employment issues that we're having, and you guys have made a lot of strides in that. Are we pretty much full now?
I know, we're, we're actually down three people, so...
Three?
Yeah. We're getting there.
Well, I'm there.
Any further questions for Fred? All right, hearing done, roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS 155, 127 Paramedic, negative 3,709.13. C 127 Paramedic, positive 3,709.13. G 109 Advanced EMT, negative 16,000. C 146 Advanced EMT, negative 5,000. 196 Overtime, positive 21,000 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Looks like we're doing some adjusting, 'cause there's some openings?
Yes, yes. Megan, 2 Office Manager EMS, so we have two openings right now, and then we are down three medics and now an EMT, so we are, overtime has picked up significantly. So, we were so late in hiring an EMT before, um, we had so much money left in their pay line, so I need to move that to overtime to get us through these next two pays. And I talked to Donna over in finance, and I don't even know if this'll get us through the next two pays, so I might be, I might be back. But, if I end up making it through, then I'll withdraw it, but I, I may not.
What was the reasoning for leaving?
Uh, one left because he was promoted to the fire chief, um, at the fire department that he was at, and then the other one just left for more money.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Jail 145, starting with E 113 Correctional Officer, negative 1,403. F 113 Correctional Officer, positive 1,403. G 140 Correctional Officer, negative 1,403.
The next line should be H 140 Correctional Officer, positive 1,403.
B 143 Correctional Officer, negative 1,403.50. C 143 Correctional Officer, positive 1,403.50 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Looks like we had some employees leave and some new folks coming in, hopefully.
Oh.
How has the hiring been?
We actually have some. We're just waiting on their drug screens to come back and their MMPI results, and then we'll be good to go.
All right, any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Prosecutor 137, A 103 Deputy Prosecutor, negative 7,620.76. B 103 Deputy Prosecutor, positive 7,620.76 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Mr. Quakenbush.
Motion by Ballard, second by Quakenbush. Any questions? Looks like it's just a employee left and a new employee coming in.
Yeah, and I might make you aware, the two people that we've asked for new lines for left for better pay.
Any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Surveyor 130, 102 Office Manager, negative 13,630.88. A 102 Office Manager, positive 13,630.88, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Webb, second by Ballard. Again, looks like an employee left and opening up a position again.
Correct.
All right, any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Under other, starting with Cosafan 1212, 197 Part-Time Office Administrator, negative $500. 199 Longevity, positive $500 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Webb, second by Quakenbush. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Longevity is usually something we catch in the budget. Was it something that was missed?
Yeah.
Okay.
This was the first time she was gonna get it, and my cost director didn't know that that was reinstated. And so I caught it when I was doing work service records for 2023.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
All right, any more questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway 1176, we have B 158 Mechanic, negative 1,240.16. C 158 Mechanic, negative 3,109.80. D 158 Mechanic, positive 4,349.96 for a total of zero.
Move to...
Go ahead, Ron.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Ballard, second by Webb. Any questions?
It's just a change of employees?
Yep, cleaning up lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jail Loewit, 1170, A 106 Correctional Officer, negative 1,123. B 106 Correctional Officer, positive 1,123. B 103 Correctional Officer, negative 1,403.50. C 103 Correctional Officer, positive 1,403.50 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Webb, second by Ballard. Looks like some employees were just moving around again.
Left. They just left.
They just left?
Just left.
Will you? Any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is for Prosecutor Lit, 1170. We have C 102 Deputy Prosecutor, negative 7,620.76. D 102 Deputy Prosecutor, positive 7,620.76 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Again, it's just a new hire? Any questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Ballard.
Yes, Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Okay, next is statewide 911, 1222. First line, 105 CAD Coordinator is negative 8,000. Next line, D 108 CAD Supervisor should read negative 2,000. 123 Deputy Director, positive 5,000. C 109 Director, positive 5,000, and then the total should read zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Ryan Ballard, President of the 911 Board. I'll go ahead and address this, because I know there's some question about this. We've had a significant change within our 911 system, our dispatch center, something I'm gonna talk about for years. Do the, the old Ron Quakenbush and, and have a story there, but something that I'm extremely proud of, as President of the 911 Board, we have come a long way. I don't know, I know, Madam President had been there originally before we did all these renovations. The dispatch center was in disarray, very much so. We've changed that. We've changed the morale within that dispatch center, and I, I say "we," collectively, it's been Fred and Kyle. And I, I wanna make sure that they get the kudos they deserve. The 911 Board was able to bring them in, and they did a lot of change. Repaired an immense amount of some of our networking within the county, some of the volunteer departments, the city of Muncie. You've got Muncie Police Department. All these entities now are within, well, actually talking to us, having conversation. Our 911 Board has never, has, I, I don't think has ever worked any better. There's a lot of, a lot of good conversation across both sides of the, the table, and a lot of that is because it's easy for us to say things and do things, because we've got Fred and Kyle at that helm. And I need, I just need you guys to understand that. I wouldn't be up here if I didn't have a tangible product to show all of you. Ron, I know you've been in there, I know you've seen it. Jessica, same deal, you've been in there as well. I encourage everybody to go in there. It's a completely different place than what it was. We're not purging individuals anymore. I think our care to the citizens of Delaware County, from a dispatch standpoint, is second to none. We have made ourselves the example, I think, within the state, so kudos to whoever else wants to try this, they have an example to go by. And that's part of what Fred and Kyle have done. So we were able to bring them in. You know, I, I would like to see this go through. I think it's imperative, quite honestly. You know, they, they could go anywhere else and probably do a lot better for a lot less hours. You know, and, and we've made some immense strides. So any of you guys that have any questions, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate you getting up there and speaking on their behalf, because I think it's important that someone do that, and, and you're just as qualified as anyone, being the President of the Board, and, and Shannon probably as well. But, we, we made a significant effort to increase the incomes of our employees through the, the previous budget session. Our 911 Director and his Deputy Director put in countless hours, endless hours, and it is a complete 180 over there. I mean, it is tremendously improved. Me personally, I, I support any time that we can get creative and, and find the money to reward our people, which is what makes everything work, then that's what we should try to do. And I say kudos to, to you guys for figuring out a way to make this happen, so we can address this in a positive way.
And I wanna point out to you, where's it coming from though, too? It's not coming from the general fund, this is a state fund, just as the Health Department has, just as other departments have, and I know that's controversial, but I'm gonna use it if I can. So I, I know it's controversial, but these people are deserving, no question about it. Like I said, you don't, if, if any of you had any idea what myself and Commissioner Henry had to walk into with that dispatch center to where we are today, leaps and bounds over what it used to be, so...
Only a one-time deal, right?
Yes, one, one, one-time deal, yes, correct. You know, we, Ryan's right, we, the, the dispatch center was, had a lot of issues there. I think everybody knows it. We brought Fred in, January, I think 6th. Fred's a talker. And, and Fred's a talker, and we had, he and I have lengthy conversation about the 911 Center. But Fred's also a doer. And, you know, he comes at me with all these ideas, and Fred's one of them, that he comes, comes up with an idea, but he also comes up with a way to pay for things. And Fred and Kyle both have done an amazing job over there at dispatch, and it is, it's totally different. The paint on the walls is different. I mean, he's changed everything, lighting, carpet, The paint on the walls is different. I mean, he's changed everything, lighting, carpet, new consoles. He gets, he got a couch donated for the employees' break room over there. I mean, he just, he just keeps going and going, and it all started with a, this spring, he wanted to put a little enclosed patio off of the center so during the break, the dispatchers could go out and get air and have a little privacy back there. And he got a grill donated for that area. And it just keeps going. Yesterday, he's in my office talking about ways to remodel the bathrooms and put a shower in, and, I mean, he's, he's he's really taking this, and he's taken off. Yeah, grants, he's gotten grants, and Fred is truly a 911 Director, and Kyle is an awesome Assistant Director, Deputy Director, and, you know, they just had training last week out at EMS 3 where 911 Centers from all over the state attended this training out there that the state paid for. They got the state to pay for this training. And it's just totally different, and they deserve, they deserve anything they can get, and they have worked long hours. Fred will call five or six at night when everyone else is winding down, not Fred. Fred's, Fred's winding up, and he's still at the, he's still at the dispatch center working, but those guys are doing an amazing job. And again, if you've not been over there, you need to go over there and take a look. And when you walk in, even the mood in the room is different with the employees. So, he's doing a great job.
I think it's important to recognize that the fruits of the labor what we get with someone like Fred, when you do a nationwide search and you hire someone on qualifications and not a political appointment. Traditionally, that position has been a political appointment year after year after year, and almost ran that facility into the ground.
I was trying to nice, Ryan, and I was.
You're 100% right. It always has been.
I'm glad that you guys, the commissioners, were able to find Fred.
Well, bringing somebody from out of state, out of Delaware County, I think was key to success there, so appreciate that, Ron.
All right, any further questions?
I had not met Kyle until last week, and I was very impressed with him. And I'm so pleased that Fred is going to serve on the Delaware County Fair Board, and I'm not sure we're all ready for him.
Lot of motivation. He's got a lot of motivation, so he'll be well-served there as well.
I believe so.
Well, on my tour, he pointed out to me also, as I, he showed me his office. He had a nice couch in there, and before I even opened my mouth, he said, "And that couch is my couch. I paid for it out of my own fund." That's the kind of conscientious person you like.
Anybody else have any questions for me? Go ahead.
In finance, we discussed, this is, I don't know if you want to call it a stipend, what you want to call it separately, but instead of adding it to their line items, their current line items, we talked about giving both of these a separate number and call it Director Stipend, Deputy Director Stipend, just so that, say next year, I'm not saying I remember everything, but I won't be here, and somebody calls and says, "Well, why is Fred only making this? Last year, he made this because it looks like his salary was a lot bigger if we put it in that line item." So, like I said, in finance, we talked about giving both of those new numbers, calling them a stipend, kind of like we did with the Court Administrator for next year to keep that separate. So, if that's what you guys-
I think it's appropriate.
Agreed to do. I'll give you the new-
What was we get a?
I'll give you the new numbers. Because this will be going out as a one-pay, it just, it makes sense to keep, give it its own line item.
Fred, I agree.
So, for the, let's see, what's first on here? For the Deputy Director, that will now be 125. And for the Director, that is C 109, that will be 124. And we're just gonna add the word stipend, just to keep it separate.
And then at the end of 2022, these will go away, right?
Right. That way, it won't be, like I said, added into that salary line and kind of throw people off next year or whatever.
Good call.
I'm pretty confident if it did, that Fred would let us know. I don't think he'd let it go.
All right, any further questions?
I need to have a motion to amend your prior motion.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve, excuse me, yes, as amended.
So, second.
Webb.
Okay. Motion by Webb, second by Ballard. We had to move with the-
They amended the prior motion to include your new account numbers.
Oh, okay. Same, Webb and Ballard.
Yes.
By Webb, second by Ballard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it makes more sense to-
No, it does.
Keep it separated.
All right, so now roll call on the, as amended?
How'd you get all that?
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you all. They'll greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, do we have to move to approve again? The amendment.
It was his original motion, wasn't it?
Yeah, so we're good?
Good, yeah.
All right, great.
We down to this section?
We are. I believe we're off to the financial now? All right.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, starting with County General, 1,000. We have Commissioners Department, 153, 386. Institutional Care, positive 137,49996, for a total of 137,49996.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions for the Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Okay, next is Prosecutor, 137. We have 311 Legal Services, positive 10,441. Computer Equipment, positive 2,500. 442 Furniture, positive 1,100, for a total of 13,600.
Move to approve.
Second. Go to Mr. Quakenbush.
All right, move by Ballard, second by Quakenbush. Would you like to explain this one for us?
Yes. The $10,000 that we're needing, the legal services are for transcripts. We've had a lot of trials this year. We have at least three more in December. And I currently have $4,365.20 in outstanding bills to pay. So, we weren't exactly sure what we need to get us through the end of the year. The 2,500, we had a Deputy Prosecutor whose laptop died, so we had to replace the laptop and docking station. And then the 1,100 is to replace the furniture in the office of the Deputy Prosecutor that left. He had owned his own furniture.
All right, any further questions? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
She, she's, she's got her smoothed out, didn't she? She was a little awkward at the Finance Committee meeting. Good job.
The first time's always a little intimidating, right? All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on to other. Elected Official Training Fund, 1217. We have 395 Schooling Clerk, positive $3,000, for a total of $3,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Quakenbush, second by Ballard. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Family Recovery Court Grant, 8192. 174 Life Insurance, positive $1. 175 Long-Term and Short-Term Disability, positive $8, for a total of $9.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion by Webb, second by Jane. I don't know if we can afford $9. Pretty intense.
These rates have been all over the place this year. And so I was like, really? I'm short a dollar? It's not even a dollar. It was like 60-some cents. I'm like, really?
Oh, my word.
It's out of her grant anyway, but whatever. Still frustrating. There's a lot of paperwork for $9. That's all I'm saying.
I agree with Ballard. This might be the smallest I have ever seen on this document, so. All right, any questions?
Good for the public to see, there, right?
Right, right. Every dollar counts.
Down to the dollar.
Yes.
Every dollar counts.
Let it go in the room.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Public Defender's Office Supplemental, 1,200. 171 FICA, positive $510. 172 PRF, positive $745. Total equals $1,255.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Webb, second by Quakenbush. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to the special appropriations.
Okay, starts out in County General, Commissioners Department, 153. We have 173 Health Insurance, positive $300,000, for a total of $300,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Ballard, second by Webb. Any questions?
I do have a question on this. If we could. So, I know we usually do a kind of a guesstimate on the health insurance. Is this something that's, what's needed for the rest of the year?
I'm actually going to yield that question to Donna. I think she's gonna best be able to answer it. So, we, at the end of every year, what we have left in this 173 Health Insurance, we will typically, I don't want to say donate, but we'll give it to Donna's 4107, or 4701. 4701 Health Plan, which is where everyone's premiums go into, and then she pays bills from there. And so we, what is left in here, we'll essentially give to her at the end of the year to pay the remaining year claims that are still coming in. Well, this year, this is the first time this has happened where she has run out way before she anticipated in this 4701. And we, at the same time, don't have a huge bulk sitting to give to her like we typically do. So, that's the reason for the appropriation. So, never mind, I guess I could have answered that. Donna, did I cover that?
I'm gonna say August, I can't remember. Commissioners, we were running very short at that time, so the Commissioners allowed me to move $100,000. Last year in December, we had 95,000 left. The year before, I moved like 200,000. Well, Commissioners needed money in utilities, so they transferred out 140,000 out of Health Insurance to help cover utilities because we didn't have no choice. So, now this 300,000, right now, just doing a estimate, which I really think my estimate's probably low now that I've rechecked it. If we did nothing, we could not pay our bills in December, and we would be anywhere from 85,000 to 100,000 short of paying. And that's just, I just took the average, and I used 600,000 for claims for December. Last year, it was over 600,000. You just don't know. Everybody runs to the doctor at the end of the year. And then we'll still be getting big claims in January. They'll kind of ease off a little bit in February. But, this allows us to move this 300,000 to get us through the rest of this year and have money to start January with. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to have any, we wouldn't be able to pay any claims in January till the end of the month when the monthly reimbursements come back, which right now aren't covering our expenses because it's the end of the year and they're so huge. So, I for one, hope you will approve the 300,000 so we can have enough money to pay our claims and start the year with money to pay claims.
We had quite a lengthy discussion about this at the Finance Committee meeting, and there's some, some things that have been changed over the years as to what to do with balances in what I call satellite departments. But just to give you an idea, if you think of the first 10 months, the expenses that Donna's talking about, in January was 518,869. February was 250, 250, 113. March, 320, 039. April, 344, 241. Not to bore you, but the one in October was 580,180. This is, this is big money. This Health Insurance is one of the greatest, what, what do we call it?
Expense?
Employees Benefit Plan, and it's expensive. And I personally, I hate to bore you, but in 1981, when I came on as County Commissioner, fresh off the street, the first thing the insurance agent told us that year was that we can no longer afford to pay insurance premiums to the insurance company, it was Travelers at the time, that we should look into self-insurance. And during my interim here, we've, we've created a, what do we call it? Health Insurance, I don't use it, but what's-
The clinic?
The clinic. We use the clinic. We've, and the clinic is a cost, a monthly cost. It's in these large numbers. There's a lot of benefits there to the employees. Even though the Commissioners have had to go to a deductible for employees, it's expensive. And I'll tell you one thing for sure, that's one advantage to getting old, because I've been on Medicare for quite a while. And it is through, I was kind of paid for my own for a while, and now I'm on an Advantage Plan, and they just take some out of my Social Security. But, this, this is a big dollars, and it won't get better if some of the little surpluses that come in and ask for, using the extra money in their insurance fund and what I call satellite departments, needs to go back into the Commissioners, what's that number?
4701.
4701 account, rather than using it for some new computer or whatever somebody needs. So, I challenged Mr. Henry to get that back. We used to do it that way, and then all of a sudden-
And they shouldn't be able to pay other-
Judy reminded me when it was changed, at a certain time, that the auditors changed the job. But, it's gotta go back to where that extra money goes into that, or you're not gonna be able to keep up with it. That's all there is to it. And I've seen this go from not a lot of money to a bunch of money, not a lot of expense. And it's wonderful because you want to keep your workforce healthy, and I encourage them to go to the doctor when you, when you can and when you have to, to keep your health. Otherwise, you won't get as old as I am.
In an attempt to simplify that, what Ron was saying in the Finance Meeting was, so every year, everyone is encouraged to add 10% to their health insurance, just as a buffer, because HR does not have those final figures yet by the time we have budget hearings. So, his idea was, if that 10% buffer does not end up getting used by said department, instead of transferring it elsewhere in their budget, let it go back so it can be utilized for this purpose here. Because, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Madam President, I really, they're here asking for money. Really, other bills shouldn't be paid out of the insurance line. I mean, there's gotta be a different spot to come up with funding that they need because you spend 150,000 out of it, now they're asking for 300,000 to put back in it. You know, so really, if that's, if that's budgeted by the Council for Insurance, it should be insurance. That's all. And then, you know, if you have more left, then it goes into next year's insurance fund or whatever, because we run short on insurance every year. We have for eight years. You run short.
Well, then, when someone comes here and asks for a transfer from one fund to the, to another, I'm under the impression that that's excess money that they don't need, not, well, now that, that's basically robbing Peter to pay Paul. And now we're putting it back in. And now we're putting it back in later.
Well, that typically is what happens. Like I said,
Offer a little bit more scrutiny on those transfers.
This is the first year where we haven't had extra to give her for this forty-seven oh one. Like normally, I will put it on letterhead, and the commissioners sign off on it, that we're giving two hundred and fifty thousand, for example, to Donna's forty-seven oh one. This is the first time we aren't able to do that. We're having to appropriate. And I had mentioned, on your point, Steve, because it was kind of brought up that way in finance as well as if there's a missed budget here, but my rebuttal was, this three hundred thousand is for her forty-seven oh one. That forty-seven oh one, yes, those bills, bills get paid by the commissioners, but that is not in my budget. I don't have access to forty-seven oh one and VIP, for example, so I, this is not something I could foresee in any capacity. I have no monitoring capabilities of this fund. And she doesn't even, I mean, nobody has a crystal ball to see, you know, what claims are going to come in for the end of the year. So, this is just kind of an isolated situation, more or less, as far as I'm concerned.
And I, I agree. I like the idea of kind of keeping that insurance fund off limits for moving around. I know we've had to do that for like utilities and whatnot, so I guess I would challenge you, when we come into budget hearings next year, now that we've had more time in the new Justice Center, to give us like a legitimate, your best guess with some, you know, increases, and you typically do.
We got a really good jump this year in utilities. Yeah, you guys approved that during budget hearings, so. And utilities is unique this year for everybody, personally and business-wise. I mean, that just is what it is.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
I will say that, like this appropriation, previously, we did appropriations on the other thing for County General. You approved a budget, budget hearings for a certain dollar amount. This is, this is taken away from next year's budget, when they, because I only estimated two hundred thousand, hoping that's all you guys would.
Yeah, that's coming out of our operating balance, right? Yep.
Just a heads up when they come in in January and say, this is what we got.
Yep.
That's now.
It'll be less, yes.
I mean, can't help it, but I just wanted to.
Good point.
That's good clarification.
I think we got a healthy one to start, right? I think we got a healthy operating balance to start.
For now.
For now, right?
For now, yeah. We don't want to get too excited here. All right, moving on.
When I came in,
Hold them shut this down again.
When I came in as treasurer many, many years ago, the employee contribution was fifty cents a pay. Donna, do you remember that?
Yeah, we used to not pay anyone. It went up fifty cents, and it went up to a dollar. It was like, oh, my God. That seemed like a lot back then, so, yeah.
It's not cheap.
And it's still, I mean, considering what we pay now, it's really not bad. If you go somewhere else, you're not going to get it for that, but. It used to be free.
All right, moving on.
Okay, under other, we have Cume Bridge, eleven thirty-six.
Cume Building.
Cume Building, I'm sorry, thank you. Two twelve. This is Cume Buildings for Security Badges, positive two thousand, two seventy-two, seventy-five, for a total of two thousand, two seventy-two, seventy-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Webb, second by Ballard. Any questions? Not hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Madam President, I move to approve the financial transfers and amend the salary ordinance with like reductions and amend the hiring freeze ordinance, twenty twenty dash zero one five.
Second.
Motion by Ballard, second by Webb. Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
This is a point of order. You guys actually already repealed the hiring freeze. It wasn't on the agendas for a while, and it's crept back on there, so.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't make a difference now, but it's not actually in place.
Make a note to remove that moving forward. Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is appointments for the Fair Board. Now, this was something that Scott had talked to Melanie about prior to him having to resign for State Senate. I've been playing phone tag with him for a while now, trying to figure out exactly what this is, so Melanie, would you like to explain, please?
Okay, the Fair Board is made up of twenty-one members. County Council has two of those appointments. Fair Board members serve three-year terms. So, I am asking, at this time, your two appointments are Bart Keisling and Tom Eisen. I am asking to have Bart Keisling reappointed, and I will tell you, from the standpoint of the Fair Board, we cannot operate without him. He brings in all the equipment to do all of our infield prep for all of our grandstand events. We just absolutely cannot operate without his help and his expertise and his equipment and all of the time and the stuff that he volunteers, because of course, none of us are paid, they're all volunteer positions. And then the other appointment that we are asking for, Tom Eisen was going to step back to community volunteer. We believe we've had another opening, so I think we're going to ask the commissioners to reappoint him. But Bailey Jester is currently a community volunteer, and we would like to move her to a full voting member. If you would agree to appoint her also. Bailey Jester.
And it appears this is a politically balanced board, so that puts Bart as our Republican and Bailey as the Democrat representative?
I guess I wasn't aware. I, I thought we did away with any.
Okay, because it's.
It's not a political board.
Okay, because the spreadsheet we were provided with
If I could.
Has letters here, so.
It may have it on there, but the board is not a politically appointed
Political? Okay.
Balanced board, no.
Okay, thank you.
If I could speak up for a second. At the end of the last meeting, at the last County Council meeting, I had made a comment to the general public mentioning the number of boards and committee seats that would become unavailable as of December thirty-first. I think it's about thirteen committees and board seats that will be expiring, that will be, need to be reappointed by this council. And I received tremendous amount of feedback from that, several people interested in multiple positions, including the Fair Board. And I had instructed them to reach out to the auditor's office, and my understanding from speaking with several of these individuals, that they're proposing a letter qualifications and an interest to submit. For me personally, I, I would, I would like to postpone these appointments and give some time to give some other consideration. I understand that we, we get a lot of good volunteers that do a really great job in these seats. But I'm not a real big fan of reappointing the same people over and over. I think if they do a really great job, we thank them for their service, and if they want to, if they want to serve on another board or committee seat, then they should submit their interest to the auditor's office as we're asking everyone else. I think it should be up to that person to submit their interest. I don't think it's our position to seek them out and ask them if they want to serve another term. If they want to do it, they should, they should put in the work and list a letter qualifications, just like any, anyone else. The second part of that is, we've got the majority of this council that's going to be replaced as of the first. I don't think it's appropriate for us to appropriate or appoint a board seat for four years when the majority's not going to be here in two months. So, for that reason, I would make a motion to table these appointments. At minimum, until the next meeting, so we can get some more inquiries from other folks.
May I respond to that briefly? The way the Fair Board is set up, there are twenty-one voting members, but we will take anyone on as a community volunteer. And then, as openings occur, they have been involved, they can hit the, the ground running when they are in charge of events and activities, because they've already seen the operations of the Fair Board. They know the time commitment that is involved. I would also dare to say that the Fair Board is unlike any other board that you do appointments to. We are a full, working, year-round, working board. And I know there are some others, and I'm going to say the nine-one-one board is probably one that is also very involved year-round. Some other boards are going to be seasonal or making a decision-making process. We run the fair and every event that is associated with the fair. So, it is a year-round commitment. It's a huge commitment. That's why we like to take anyone that is interested as a community volunteer. Let them see what it's like, let them prove themselves before we ask that they be added to our voting board listing.
I, I appreciate that statement, and, and I know that traditionally, the way the Fair Board operates in tradition is that you become a volunteer, and then once you serve your time as a volunteer, as an intern, then you become eligible to be appointed. What I'm saying is I'm challenging that, and that this council appoints those board members, and I'm throwing a wrench in that plan and saying I don't necessarily want to be bound by those rules. I would like to open it up to everyone in the community, whoever wants to submit, including the two folks that you mentioned, and then we'll vote on it. But I want to give everyone an opportunity.
Right. Now, Ryan, I, I was going, I didn't know what, I can't see you. I, I wasn't sure what this was on our agenda, just like I said, I was playing phone tag with Scott to get clarification. And to your point, we do have a vastly new board coming on or joining us next year, and I would personally prefer to do these at our organization meeting. That gives everyone an opportunity to not only get familiar, oncoming council, an opportunity to kind of look into these and ask questions on what these boards actually do. To Melanie's point, the Fair Board is a working board. You see them in their orange shirts. All, not only the fair week with like the fun rides, but they're there during four H. I know we have Forest here with the Housing Authority. Folks that want to be on that board, they have to go to training out of state, like, so there's like vacation time that's required. There's a lot of different boards that have a lot of moving pieces. I'm also going through and just making sure, because we've had issues in the past where the list we were provided is, there'll be maybe some tweaks here and there where we had some data wrong, so.
Yeah, I did have a couple wrong on that.
And I would like to go call all of these individuals to see if they have interest on staying. But in the meantime, for those of you watching, if you do have interest, we don't have a lot of interest, so I'm, I'm excited to hear that you have a lot of interest coming your way, but we don't hear it too often. If you have interest, send us a letter, send it to the auditor's office. Does it go to Denise?
Well, he had everybody contact me, God knows why.
Okay. Contact me.
I told him, you have to, you have to send this request to the council and to the commissioners.
Okay.
I can't, because they're sending it to me.
Well, to respond to that, that's what Ron said to do in the previous meeting.
Let's send it.
Because I said, bring, send it to any council member. Ron spoke up and said, the auditor is our secretary, you can submit it to the auditor.
Let's send it to the info at, let me give everyone this address again, so we're all sending it to the same location. Multiple council members have access to this inbox, so it's countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. I would prefer that not just a, a list of which boards you'd like to participate on, I'd like to see a resume or some kind of letter where you explain what skillset you have, that would be beneficial to those particular boards. Like, we know Bart, he moves all the dirt. If you're ever out there at the county fair, at the grandstand, he's always out there working, moving dirt. There's just a lot of things going on, and I would be happy to work with Kyle and maybe get this list, once we got, we get it cleaned up for him to put on Facebook, so people have a clear way to know how to apply if interested.
I, I understand everyone's point, and I, I truly do. But somebody like Bart, how are you going to find someone to replace him?
Well.
And, and he's just a, a important part of the fairgrounds. There, there is some people, yeah, you could, you could bring on new people, but Bart's not one you can replace. I'm just going to say that.
If Bart does not get reappointed, we're probably going to come back to council next year and beg for thousands and thousands of dollars. He donates all that equipment, all that time. We don't have the money to pay for it.
I don't dispute his importance, but I, same thing, we caution the courts with their reliance on Emily as a court reporter. We, we can't paint ourselves in a corner to become reliant on one person, where if that one person falls out of favor, then the whole domino falls.
But I think.
I'm not doubting he's a great person and a valued asset.
If he's not reappointed, I think you'll probably see a lot of board members resign, because we don't have the money if he does not get reappointed.
I, I'll say this, I don't have a problem with, with this board and, and voting on this and getting this going, because I understand the significance of the fair. I understand the significance of the fairgrounds to this county and how often it's used. It's a working board, there's no question about it. I did like the analogy, it is much like a nine-one-one board, just with different responsibilities. So, I have no problem with taking care of that now. My issue is, is I'm not willing to vote on any other, any other boards. I agree with everybody else here, when it comes to the boards, probably need to have the new council's consideration rather than mine. This is a little bit different for me, because it is a working board, and, you know, the fair, there's always something happening out there, always something going. So, you have to take that into consideration, you know, especially these positions. That's a main position when it comes to moving that dirt around, all that, you know, all that out there, you know? That's important. So, I, I think we've got to be careful burning bridges as well. I think we've got to be careful, you know, about how we approach it, too. But I have no problem today voting on that, on that board position, those board positions. Anything else I'm not voting on, though?
We were, we were out there two weekends ago, in all the snow, had a demo derby. Froze to death. We had all that snow. The guys were out there working, moving stuff we ran, I mean.
So, he's out there throughout the year, too?
Yeah, we were out, Melanie and I were out there for.
We had eighty-two cars for our demolition derby on the day that we had.
Nine o'clock that morning to ten o'clock that night. We never left, because we had stuff to do, and we just.
I, I said it's the first fair event I have ever had to shovel snow.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, regardless of the importance of this gentleman, we're, we're appointing two positions, so my motion still stands to table the vote.
Ryan Webb made a motion to table.
Because we're appointing two, and I know there's a lot more interest, regardless of how important he is, there's, there's two openings.
Okay, for lack of a second, on the motion to table, make a motion to reappoint Bart Keisling to the Fair Board.
I'll second that.
Other term.
Just Bart?
Bart Keisling, yes, sir. I agree with Ryan a hundred percent. In, in fact, when I was president of the council, I always left the door open, and at the January meeting, I had prepared a recommendation for all the appointments that were available. So, by that time, everybody had a chance to submit and such, and then the council voted on those recommendations, and I, I would like to refer that to next year's council. In fact, there, there's not a majority on this board right now that'll be majority next year. Four of us are gone. So, there's going to have to be total reorganization, new officers, and I know Bart personally, I've known him since he started in business, so. He's a good man, he's got the equipment. It would be an insult to him for us not to recognize him.
I don't disagree with the value, and I don't disagree that it's a ninety-nine percent chance that this gentleman will be reappointed. However, I think the average citizen out there who wants to get involved, if we do this,
We have a motion on the floor.
Feels like they don't have any say in it.
I'm not talking about anything but Bart Keisling right now. That's the motion on the floor.
So. Okay, so, we had a motion to table by, from Webb that failed to receive a second. We have a new motion on the floor from Ron, with a second from Jane, to only appoint Bart Keisling at this time, leaving the other opening for our new council to make that decision in January. Any further questions?
Well, that's not part of my motion. My motion is just.
I'm saying, we will be making those. As president, we're not going to do that this year. We'll give everyone time, and the new council will make those decisions the first of the year, so.
I also think that, that one of the reasons that the Fair Board asks for the early appointment is that their convention is the first weekend in January, and, and that's where, you know, we tried to pick up new ideas, new events. Talked to the demo people, talked to the tractor pole people, and I.
It's a big networking event for fair boards across the state of Indiana.
And they have workshops, and, and we encourage the members to go, and you can't appoint them. them in January after, at our January meeting, because the conference is already open.
I don't think it'll be a disaster if one member doesn't get appointed.
All right, so roll call on Bart's reappointment.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Well, for the failure for us allowing any other citizen to be considered, I am voting no.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We still have an additional appointment, Ryan, so it's.
I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
I just, I don't doubt, I probably would have voted for the gentleman, I'm just stating, I don't like that we're not giving other people an opportunity to be considered.
Fair enough.
Have any of you received those emails that I received?
I've received a couple.
I received one.
Got another one this morning.
Housing Authority, they should actually go to Denise. She's the secretary of the.
They're going to me and Denise both.
Yeah, they shouldn't go to Donna, they should go to Denise. That way she can put it on your agenda, get it on.
I appreciate you clarifying that, Steve.
Bob Wilson called me about the Housing Authority, and would like to have those three appointees reappointed, and Forrest Bowers is in the audience this morning, and I'm sure that's his, they're standing also. Am I right, Forrest?
Well, I'll bring him up here in a little bit, because I saw he was here, so I can bring him up. All right, so let's move on to our 2023 Council Meetings Deadlines and Finance Meeting Dates. You all should have received by email or have the copy here today with our deadlines for financials, the finance meeting and our council meeting. Obviously, December is always early, because we only do transfers. And then the other one to note is, November will be a little earlier than usual, just the way Denise was explaining it, was just the way Thanksgiving falls, and then how closely the next December meeting is. So other than that, our council meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month. So given that information, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I hear a second. All right. Any discussion?
Jocker.
Mary, I like hearing your voice, thank you for that. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yep.
Mr. Ballard.
Stepped out.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, great. Do we have any department heads? Hearing none. We'll move on to new business. I see Forrest is in the audience, and he, I believe, is the president of the Housing Authority Board.
Madam President, members of the council, good morning. My name is Forrest Bowers, reside at 1205 North Brentwood Lane, Muncie, Indiana, 47304. I come before you this morning to encourage you, as has been mentioned by others of the council, to reappoint Kira Childress, Mr. Jason Lips, and Mr. LaTey Poggeese. Kira is a HR professional. Mr. Lips is a business, I'm sorry, he's in business as a realtor and in the Housing Authority with, with a company here in Muncie. Very professional. Mr. LaTey Poggeese is a minority business owner, and they, they will be up for reappointment. And I've been a member three or four years now, and they add youth and understanding and comprehension of the needs of our community at this time. So I'm here to ask you to consider those three individuals for reappointment. They have been a great asset to our board, and we are looking at, at future activities pertaining to the growth of the Housing Authority itself.
Forrest, while we have you up there, I know that this is one of the boards where individuals have to, they have to attend training.
Yes, ma'am.
So could you explain what that training is like, and how many days is required for that?
Yeah, well, we spend a weekend at different locations around the country. Those are established by, we are members of NARO, National Housing Authority Board, which deals a lot with, with Congress, of course, with appropriations, because we are under HUD through the state of Indiana. We are basically a small housing authority because of the size, but yet we are a viable entity within the community. We, as commissioners, we are certified, we go through orientation classes, we also have a basic certification, and then we have an ethics certification, and then we receive our certificate from National. There are other courses that we, we take, and there are other programs that are available to us. Our executive director, Noam Maranour, is probably one of the best executive directors that you'll ever find within that particular entity. So, yes, we do, we do training, orientations, the staff as well does the same thing. So we have, we have a budget, but it's, we've had very high marks in the evaluations from HUD inspectors and/or state inspectors as well.
Sir, could you repeat your name? I didn't catch it.
My name is Forrest L. Bowers, B-O-W-E-R-S.
Mr. Bowers.
Been a resident of this community almost as long as Ron.
Close.
Oh, okay.
If I could respond, Mr. Bowers, I, just nice to meet you, and I appreciate you coming up here on those, those folks' behalf. I don't know two of them, I do know Mr. Poggeese, and I know he's a very qualified person. For me personally, I think this would be a good opportunity to remind the public, as well as yourself. For me, I think it would be out of line to consider someone who hasn't personally submitted their, their interests. And I understand, I know Melanie had mentioned a couple of people, and you're here to speak on these three's behalf, but for me, and I'm only speaking for me, for my consideration, for my vote, I would like to, for each personal individual to declare their interest for a position.
I'm sure those individuals will do that.
Yeah, I've received letters from two.
Sorry, what?
I've received letters from two, so they are on the list.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sure that will, will happen.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things, when I was president of this board, I required that any appointment come at least once a year to a meeting, and make a little talk to us about how they were doing, what they were doing, so we'd get to see them, because sometimes appointments come without that personal touch, and I like to do that, so I'd recommend you continue that.
Noted. All right, any other new business? Thank you, Forrest.
I have a, I would like, I'm on a personal privilege, and as I shared with you, I'm almost as old as Ron, which that puts us close to Methuselah. I would like to thank Mr. Quakenbush and Ms. Chambers for all the years that they have devoted to this community, its ups and downs, its growth, its setbacks, and it's been a personal privilege of mine to have served in other organizations over our lifetime. Those two persons have been a great benefit and asset to our community. Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, God bless you all. I'm done.
All right, any other new business? All right, hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to amend our agenda to include public comment.
Second, do you make a motion?
I'm asking for a motion, so you're moving.
Second.
All right.
Not long.
Nope, that's all right. It is now. All right, roll call, please.
Just a second here.
Sure. Sorry, we threw you off, I apologize.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, we will open this up to public comment. The, oh, we had.
Real fast, before you go any further on that, on this, since we were just talking about those board appointments, is it possible to clarify for the public who are wanting to seek a seat, when we will be voting for this?
Yeah, I will get something clarified, once I make sure, I wanted to double check, because I know we had another email come through that a date was wrong, so I want to make some phone calls. When I do, I'll reach out to Kyle and get something official on the county page.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome. Because, yeah, that way people can see it and know exactly who to go to, so we don't miss anybody's names.
Oh, yeah, and mainly, I just want to make sure no one misses the deadline, if they do have interest.
Right.
That they can submit their interest.
Yeah, we'd want that by the, probably, well, I'll figure that out, and then talk to y'all, and we'll get that figured out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so public comment, we had one individual sign up, and that would be Christopher Bilbury, if you'd like to approach.
So I appreciate that you put the public comments on the agenda. Can I ask a question, why wasn't it on the agenda, to begin with?
Well, that'd be a question for our former president.
Okay. And it's, it's really too bad he's not here to be able to hear this. It's a shame, rather. The reason I'm here is because of how the meeting ended last month. Watching this meeting end last month, there was one citizen that spoke, longtime former newsman, but he was also speaking on behalf of other citizens that actually came, they took off work, and they came to speak. They thought that Public Concerns would be here. Apparently, Public Concerns was taken off the agenda by one council member and the attorney. It seemed as though none of the rest of you knew that Public Concerns wasn't taken off the agenda. Most of you thought that Public Concerns was on there. The other concerning thing is when, obviously, there has to be decorum, you know, I have no problem showing my ass if I feel like that is needed, but there has to be decorum from this side, I get it. But at the same time, you guys are elected, you get paid tax dollars, and it doesn't matter how many times or how sick of hearing transparency or communication you are, you are elected and paid tax dollars to sit there and hear that. And it doesn't matter if there is one person coming in here and speaking over a course of 12 months, or if there's a line out the door every meeting you have. If you're sitting there, and you're tired of hearing that, and you're tired of hearing from the citizens, just resign and let your party caucus somebody else in. It's not that hard. I was deeply troubled to hear that not a member from the elected body was chastising a citizen, but an unelected member that is paid to give you guys advice was chastising a citizen. It's disgusting to me, that it's uncalled for. If that person wants to run for office and have the duly elected power and authority that you all have, put his name on the ballot. The president did not speak up. I feel like you guys, you guys don't have the same trouble Muncie City has. You don't, because you guys don't have meetings in the evening. You don't have 200 and 300 people that come in and watch your meetings, you don't have 10 or 15 people that speak. You might have a citizen or two get up and speak, maybe every meeting, maybe every other meeting, something like that. The fact that this gentleman wanted to speak, and you guys treated him the way that you did, the whole lot of you, even though it was mainly one or two people yelling at him, the whole lot of you could have spoke up and said, I'll give this person the floor. The fact that none, none of you did that is very disappointing. And I'm just asking that, since most of you won't be here, the ones of you that will be, please consider your role. You're not leaders, you're public servants. You're here to serve the public. Understand that? Does everybody that's going to be here next month understand that? Start serving the public better than what you're doing.
Thank you for your comments, and I think, would you like to speak? State your name, please, Forrest.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't sign up, but am I still allowed to speak?
Sure, I will open.
My name is Jeff Hager, and I'd like to.
Jeff Hager. H-A-G-E-R?
That's correct, ma'am. I'd like to reiterate Mr. Bilbury's sentiment. I think it was very out of line, from what I watched, the attorney was the one that was escalating the situation. He's not an elected official. And to put it in context, that he understands that if you go to court, there's two sides. He attempted to take away one of the sides. A judge isn't going to allow that to happen. He's going to intervene, and as a council, again, like Mr. Bilbury is saying, shame on the council for allowing this to go on and continue, and then not intervene. The two ladies that went and wanted to get security, I believe, with the new council member coming in, there should be some kind of, I, the way that I look at it, is it, it was an equivalent of saying, fire, fire, in a theater, and there was no fire. All Mr. Yanser was doing was disagreeing with what was going on, and when the attorney raised his voice, Yanser felt obligated to raise his voice to get his point across. So when Mr. Bilbury's talking about decorum, the decorum starts with the council, period. And the public is there to check you guys every time you do something that the public does not like. And it was obvious, Mr. Yanser felt it was inappropriate with what you guys done, it was discussed between one or two people, not the general counsel, and hopefully, with the new council coming on, they're going to rely on the remaining people very heavily for that decorum. And so I hope that the remaining council members will take them under their wings and say, hey, let's not have a repeat of this, because not only was it disgusting, it was very unprofessional, it was, in some instances, when the two ladies wanted to go get security, and Sheriff Skinner is here, you hire a fire when there's no fire, that's a felony.
Well, Sheriff Skinner wasn't here.
Yeah, I know he wasn't there. But, but I'm saying that he's, he's here right now. And what I'm saying, it's the equivalent, when you want to go get security, and all the person was doing was disagreeing with what was on the agenda, that is no call to call for security. There ought to be some kind of rules or regulations that states you can only call for security for a very specific reason, not because you disagree with what the person is actually trying to say or talk about. Thank you very much.
Very welcome. And I want to say that, I hear both you and Chris's points, and I think there is an opportunity here for us to do a little bit better. In the moment, obviously, it was a little chaotic, I think that's what threw some of us off. We do hire Ben to be here to be our legal counsel, and we did not have public comment on, and I can't, I can't speak to that, that wasn't my choice. And by law, we do not have to provide public comment in a council meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
But we, we're here doing it now. So I think that, again, we have an opportunity, I think, just in general, sometimes people's emotions get the best of them, and I think Mr. Yanser got excited, everyone kind of got excited, and I apologize. Mr. Yancer got excited, everyone kind of got excited, and I apologize for that, and I thank you both for bringing that to our attention today.
I hope so, and thank you for the opportunity to talk.
I feel a little bit guilty because I think maybe Scott was trying to close the meeting and get out, and I brought up the fact that that was potentially his last meeting here.
Right.
And I basically wanted to thank him for his service. I know a lot of people disagreed with me, that that was not going to be his last meeting, but it was his last meeting.
Right, right. Well, and I think we all had a teaching moment.
Yes.
Let's, let's hope so. I don't see Mr. Yancer in the crowd, but I think it was a teachable moment for not only the audience, but the council members as well. He felt very put off and disenfranchised-
Sure.
-by not being able to talk. And when the, the last people that you should disenfranchise are your boss.
And that's the voters.
The one thing I want to, I want to say, when it comes to decorum, it is on both sides, and I hope both of you understand that.
Yes.
Okay? My issue, when it came to that situation, is the fact that an unelected person was attacking another unelected person when it came to Donna, okay? Talking about the transparency of the numbers, the budget, the books, and all that, all that is on gateway for the general public. It can all be seen. So, that's part of the transparency thing that I get a little sideways about, is you're saying that Donna, Donna's not being transparent. That's what was being said in a lot of ways. Well, okay, is she or isn't she, if it's already online for everybody to see from anywhere within the state? So, that's where I kind of, I had my issue there. There's decorum on both sides. That approach was, I mean, that was ridiculous, that approach. She has no reason to be attacked. If you want to come at somebody, that's fine, you come at us, but there was no reason for that. That's where everything changed, I think, from that moment, too.
And I agree with that. I was just talking about where, because I reviewed the video numerous times, and I think if you look back at it, the reason Yancer escalated was because the attorney initially started escalating instead of backing off that.
I don't disagree with you, but I do disagree with you in certain aspects. I think there's a lot that comes in that moment. I don't know that we continue to rehash it and spend hours doing this. I think, you know, let's go ahead and make that checkmark point taken, that new council will be doing better from then on out, so, okay?
Thank you, sir.
For me personally, sir, I appreciate both of you coming up and giving us an opportunity to reflect with some accountability, because it's good to hear from the citizens, and I think everybody, that kind of was a chaotic scene that erupted, and I honestly think if everyone involved had an opportunity to redo that, that most of us would have probably changed a couple of things about the way that we handle it with everyone involved. So, I appreciate you both getting, taking the opportunity to come up here today and speak with us about it.
Hindsight's 2020 as well, but thank you for the time.
Yes, ma'am.
One point. Finishing my 24th year on this board, that's the first time I've ever seen no, a lack of comment from the audience in a long time.
Right.
It was a one-time thing. It's unfortunate, but we've always had comment from the-
Well, and I-
It was a one-time deal, and-
Right.
Well-
We got it amended, we got it.
Caught it.
And I definitely would like to thank Mary, I know Mary personally, and she has put a lot of time and effort from the city. I used to be at the Senior Citizen Center, running their computer lab, and that's how I know Mary, but I've seen Mr. Quakenbush on occasion, and I would definitely like to thank the people that are not returning. Thank you for your service very much.
Thank you.
And I think the city has become a better city because of your service. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, and then I saw Mike had a question, so this will be our last one. Keep it quick, Forrest, Mike.
Hey, I'll be brief. My name is Mike Jones, I live on 650 East in Salmy, Indiana. I initially came up this morning only to speak and thank Ron and Mary and Ryan Ballard and Donna. I am, I am very, very much appreciative. When I first came on council, Ron, they set me beside Ron, not that I wanted to, but he, he taught me an awful lot about council business, and I learned from him very, very much through the years, and I've been in so many meetings and caucuses with Mary, and I know her heart, and it's good, and she cares about the citizens of Muncie and Elara County, and I've always appreciated that about Mary. With, with the knowledge drain that's going to be gone, I mean, from Ron to Mary to Donna in all her capacity down in the Otter's Office, and Ryan, I never worked with you, but I've followed you closely, and you've been a very solid member of the council, and I've always appreciated that. Jane, I've worked with her for many years, and she is one as well who cares about the community. So, I mean that truly, and I appreciate it very much. The new council members are going to have a row to hoe coming forward. That knowledge base to draw on isn't going to be there, and you're not even going to know what you don't know. So, pay attention, and I hope you've absorbed where you can carry on. The county always has a way of producing good folks to go on to council and use good judgment, and so, that's what I got to say about that. But I want to make one more brief comment. I'm not angry, I'm not disgusted, I'm not mad at anybody, and we all know, the public surely knows, that some people like attention, and so, they express it and they use the crutch. It's just public comment, I got a right to do it, and that's fine and dandy. The council, I believe, in all my years, has always provided decorum in our meetings, and, no, I don't, I didn't like the way that last meeting commenced. On the other hand, I appreciate somebody speaking up on the council's behalf. With that, I wish you all good luck and blessings for the holidays, and thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well, I personally am going to miss Mary and Ron and my new friend, Ryan. Mary and I have worked together ever since we were back in township government. I consider Mary a good friend. Ron has sometimes been my friend, and sometimes has not been my friend. But if I, if I do something that Ron thinks was a good thing, he'll be the first one to call me and say, "I think you were right." And he'll also be the first one to call me and say, "I think you're wrong." And it takes a special friendship to be able to do that, for him to call me and for me to say, "Get lost," or whatever I want to say to him that day. Anyway, I'm going to miss both of them extremely, and- Love it.
Thank you.
Love you, baby.
All right, before we get too emotional up here, everyone, as you can see, we have a very close council, we all think very highly of each other, and it's going to be tough, but that's how elections work. So, with that, I'm thankful for all of you, I'm thankful for all of you in the audience that was watching online. Have a very blessed holiday, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Can I say one thing?
Quickly, quickly. I've got a motion.
I have a little handout for you. I just finished a book on George Washington called His Excellency, and I've highlighted this, so I want to hand it out to you. I copied it out of the book. It shows how our government started, right here, during the Constitutional Convention. I think it's really appropriate for you to see this. And if you like the book, it's a wonderful book, and it's not a new book, but it's not a biography, it's a, a guy went through the research and wrote a book from all the notes from George and all his friends. And I want to close my career here. I had a speech prepared, but I decided that the best way for me to close it is to say, "It's been a wonderful experience, and I've crossed paths, or followed paths, or shared paths of life with about 1,000 people probably in this government, and with that, I say thank you all very much."
Thank you, sir. And real fast, before you close that motion, and I know this is the December meeting, but it's just in case anything changes between now and then, it's been a great honor to serve with Mary, Ron, and Ryan, and you guys have been very helpful, helping me along the way. For the only rookie on the council, I appreciate you guys' help.
I won't be here in December, so that's why I had to say.
I'm going to call you if I have any questions.
You better be watching. I'm going to be speaking in December, so.
Other thing I wanted to say, real quickly, is that I noticed in the audience, we had one person, Mr. Matt Cancer, congratulations on the election, and I look forward to working with you, start of January.
All right, the next meeting is December, yes, December 13th, it's Tuesday, it's coming up quick. We have a motion on the floor from Ballard to adjourn. Will someone please second?
I thought we did. I'll second it.
No, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Jane.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, and we adjourn.